And swirl and swirl. And we've done everything that we can to fix them, they need you have those.
I think, I think this is a super smart.
And be so great.
It's kinda scary in this world that we don't have.
Can I ask a question?
This is kinda.
Um, have you run into any of these ransomware issues lately?
Yeah.
I have.
I don't know if the board's aware of that, but that gets really expensive.
That's very.
Most small businesses pay to get their data back.
Thousands and thousands of dollars.
And I don't think we have ransomers attached to it.
But do you approve of that?
Yes.
Yes, we do. And I asked him, I said, do towns really need it? Are they really that vulnerable?
Oh, yeah. I had small businesses fifty grand to get all their data back.
He said, yes.
And they pay it.
They have towns that.
Those towns that paid the ransom to get themselves.
So I, I do want to kinda give this asterisk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, everyone's gonna get hacked. Um, it's, it's, it's a matter of when.
Right.
So even Google, as, as they are a very, very well endowed company, even they get compromised for that. So I, I just wanna say that, you know, yes, we can prevent a lot. But, um, but hackers, scammers, they're getting very crafty and they're getting.
Well, hopefully, we're not main target there, Lubec. Yeah, I.
Be surprised.
Oh, we have.
If we can backup our data more regularly, maybe another server or something.
Something where like, no one's gonna look at my.
If the server goes down, um.
I think it's a great idea.
I think Nick will get it up and working again.
I'm gonna, go ahead Suzanne.
I said, if our server goes down, if it's hacked, or if it's, um, it crashes, I think talking to Nick, he can get it up and working quicker than three of them.
Yeah, and actually the, uh.
So are we doing month to month, or do you, or what?
I think we should do an annual.
Someone asked about the month.
Well, I was, I asked Nick about where we're already in our budget season, if we could do it until June next year, and then address it in our budget season for July forward.
For, for a year, a year and a half.
If he's agreeable.
Yeah.
But you get both of the bits.
And that was for both plans, because we want them. I mean, the IT, that'll cover him coming down and installing new hardware.
But we have three people being trained right now, and I think that, and we did have a town administrator who was quite IT savvy, but she was constantly, that was a lot of her job, helping out.
Yeah.
She's not here, she's the county manager now.
And when does it?
Renee, you must know Renee. So I think this will be very helpful, very, very helpful, so.
I think we need to do it in two motions, I think we need to do the monthly, then the tax, two separate motions.
Yeah.
So I will, I will make a motion that we do the month maintenance.
All second. All in favor?
And I'll make a motion that we do the tax support.
Second. All in favor? There we go. Can we start tomorrow?
Yes. And also, just so you, so you know, um, when the Clark computer went down, I don't even think it's four years.
No, it was like, already, I dropped it off one day, and I think it was twelve minutes, the next day or the day after, everybody was like, oh.
I feel a little bit covered.
Well, that's like, it's something.
We have like some, we didn't have to spend five thousand on the fire, um, for fireworks.
If I did, I'd come back and voice.
We didn't have. We got that money.
You paid for something, I can't remember.
We can put that forward, if you want. That was a lot. Well, congratulations, thanks for lunch.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming here to see us.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And putting up with our regular meeting, I appreciate it.
I, I would like to show you pictures, I have five of them, it'll take a little long.
The monthly maintenance is one ninety-five, and the tax support is three hundred.
Three hundred?
For the tax support, yeah.
It's monthly. Thank you very much.
Very much. You guys have one for that.
Okay. Okay, well, that's good. So we have to put in, our next on the agenda is a single audit, RFP, because the grant, um, wastewater treatment grant upgrade is over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's a, I can't say, single audit, um, each year. And so that has to go out to bid, um, I suggested to Suzanne that she send the RFP out to the two or three companies that actually do it. There's very few, there's very few people in the state of Maine. And rather than to spend the money on an ad in the Bangor, uh, Pago, I think she should actually send it to the few people that do it.
Oh, absolutely.
Because why spend a thousand dollars on an ad?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I do have one name for the RHR.
The RHR, there's a couple more.
That, that does do it.
Yeah.
So we make a motion that we have to put this out.
Do you, do you guys approve the ad? Cause I just, I was trying to find one, I don't.
Oh.
I'm running off CPA, and I don't know which equipment is different. I kinda got, I got this from.
Let me look at it.
Terri Anne, Terri Anne Holden.
Oh, good, well, she, she would go.
With the grant, so that's what I'm going by.
Did you put it in our package? Yeah, we have it.
Yep.
Yep, it looked into me, but I have no idea.
I could pass this one around.
We had it in our package. I'm sure it's in here.
I'll make a motion.
There it is.
I'll, I'll make a motion, let Suzanne.
If Terri Anne gave this to you, it should be yes.
I'll make a motion, let Suzanne explore the three opportunities for the RFP.
Um, all second then?
Second.
Is that Rachel? All in favor? Okay.
Good.
Splitboard meeting, next time, it's gonna be on Tuesday, cause it's Thanksgiving week. We don't wanna have it Wednesday night before Thanksgiving, people might be.
It's a tricky time.
Yes, at five PM. The new time will be five PM.
Five PM.
That'll be good.
Yes, when, when there's no more parking on the street, starting November fifteenth, then we have it at five, because it's so dark out, so. Till April fifteenth, it'll be at five. Homestead overage. So we have to pay the state back approximately fifteen thousand dollars. Because at the time, the homestead estimate was sent to the state. It was estimated on the previous year's mill rate, the Assessor of Plankton made us warn. So when the mill rate went down, the home exemptions went down, leaving a fifteen thousand dollar overage that they sent to us. So we're having to send that back to them.
Well, the state's kinda made here, don't they?
They do. Love the money.
They, they, they have the most untaxed property in the back, but yet we pay them taxes on the property, we don't get that.
Boy, oh boy, how the state of Maine.
I know, our other option was to wait, and they would withhold that fifteen thousand from our next payment. Um, and when I talked to Linda Lucas, our next payment will be in Au- August of twenty twenty-four, which would affect twenty-four, twenty-five directly, not this year.
So I just question, where could we get that money that we could send back?
It'll come out of the home exemption line, cause right now.
Okay, alright.
Overall, it'll be.
They do nothing but help us, don't they?
Well, she said that they normally, if they know a town's going through a statewide revaluation, that they normally will lower the rate themselves, with their short staff, and didn't, they do it.
Yeah, no, they're working like nine to twelve now.
They gotta just, they gotta just give it to us to give to the school. They only fund us a thirteen percent. Tows get sixteen.
And you have to come to the tax meetings. Town office closed Bethel's Day, and that would be Friday, cause Bethel's Day is on a Saturday.
Yep.
So, and recycling will be closed on Saturday, not Friday, because they normally work Friday, Saturday, so.
Have we announced the change in recycling, or like, are not gonna be Wednesday?
It's, no, it's just Friday and Saturday, but it's nine, uh, eight to four, eight to four.
And then we announce?
Well, we are, we'll do it now. Recycling is now Friday and Saturday, eight to four, but not this Saturday.
Not Wednesday.
No Wednesday. We've taken the employee from recycling, and we have eliminated one of the days, because they don't buy anything with cardboard. And we're having to pay twice for you to bring it over, and then the rest dispose of it, which is not cost effective.
Now, he's not gonna drive around on Saturdays like he used.
No, he's not picking up cardboard.
Okay, pick up two dollars worth of cardboard, spend the cash.
Not that, no. So, uh, that, the, the employee that worked in recycling has moved to wastewater treatment, which has been being trained for as full-time wastewater treatment employee, that's very needed. So that, with that really well.
So does that mean the town is not picking up cardboard, period?
That's what I understand, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna swear to it till we reevaluate. I believe it's gonna be open Fridays and Saturdays, and we're not gonna be running around picking up cardboard. If you want the cardboard recycled, you have to deliver it. Unless we can make some kind of agreement where we pick up from really large, like the IGA, and like a few people. Why, is there a lot of cardboard out there?
Oh, the IGA is bundled.
Well, the only one I'm concerned about is the school.
Yeah, well, I think that if we made an exception for the school and the IGA, that would not take an entire day, so.
I mean, when we used to pick up the IGA, it was out in a big bundle, you throw it back in the truck.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure that's wrong.
So your suggestion would be that we keep the school and the IGA, I agree with you.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe they can do that.
If it's possible. If it's possible. That's, that's the only thing that made that place money.
So that's just gonna need to be like before he opens on one of those.
On Friday?
Yeah, he can go on Friday earlier, before he opens.
Yeah, you guys have that.
I mean, it's not gonna take more than an hour to pick up two things of, that's right, it's gonna be. So we'll, we'll go over that. He's only been here like one, two days so far, so I talked to him on the phone. Alrighty, um, great, so pick up cardboard, the IGA, and the school. Employee Christmas bonus, that is gonna be discussed. That's, okay, so we'll just, I'll just say that the Christmas bonus for the employees comes out of the refund we get from.
Orphans.
Orphans Comp for this year. And we haven't totally decided on, on what it is yet, because we have something to discuss in executive session this, um, today, so we can't come up with a figure yet. But that, that's usually, we did this about three years ago, we decided to do this, because they are getting rewarded for not getting hurt at work. So when you get the Orphans Comp check back, I, it only makes sense that we should divide it to the employees, and in fact, it comes to.
Almost certainly.
It's anywhere between two hundred and fifty, or four hundred dollars, something like that, per full, full-time employee. That's what it's normally, something like that. So we'll table the amount till next time. Committee, who's?
I have one question, um, county budget thing. So tomorrow is the last meeting of the county budget committee, after, well, I shouldn't say that, the last scheduled meeting. Um, so the budget, even with the couple of givebacks we got, um, is still an eighteen percent increase. Um, the challenge becomes the same one we had last time. Um, I need opinion in regards to, um, the biggest, the, well, the biggest piece is our personnel, which is always what it is.
It's the sheriff's.
Well, it's the sheriff's, three full-time officers, and it's really only funding for two, cause one already went, but it's, um.
What do you mean one already went?
Well, one actually kinda started in the budget of this year, so like, actually going into the budget is funding for two full-time officers, because there would be three full-time officers that would be new. But keeping in mind that all of them have to go, well, one of them has already been recruited, but, you know, it would be a process to getting them in. And so that's a part of the increase. The, um, regional communications center is the next largest chunk of increase, and they're looking to bring on four more full-time people. And then the other personnel.
That's nine more, right?
Yes, that's the regional communications center, um, so.
And why do they need four more?
So they identify it as it would be ideal staffing for them, it would allow them to, um, you know, cover vacations and sick time without having to use an overtime line, um, so that's.
Well, wouldn't we be happy with two?
Well, that's, that's, I think that's, I think that's, I think that, I know that in some of the other people, that's kinda the discussion that has been happening. And then the other one is, um, another personnel in the, um, buildings and grounds, because they're building another build, they have two people that do the maintenance, all six buildings.
Oh, that, that makes, that makes sense.
It, they, you know, like, they kinda have to have that one, so I'm just kinda, my thinking, and I'm not sure where the people are, is that we have to fund the sheriffs. Only because of the state back out, you know, like when they really identify the work, I think that, um.
Well, I'm glad you went there.
We, we probably should fund half of what the regional communications center is looking for, because they would still.
I agree, I agree with that.
And I think we have to fund the buildings and grounds piece. And any of the other increases in the budget are inconsequential, and, and, uh, those are within norms, those are one or two percent. A big piece of it comes from these personnel pieces, and I just need.
To give them benefits and everything.
Right, I just, and, and because of the, our structure with the sheriffs, you know, they all have their own cars, but they have to buy two vehicles, they have to buy all the equipment for two sheriffs, which is a lot of money.
You have a lot of bodies. Yeah, that's terrible.
So like, you know, their thinking is, next year, there won't be that, you know, there'll be less expense, but there'll still be a large line, you know.
Like it won't be in fact, cause you don't have to buy the cars.
Correct. But, you know, I'm just looking at, I'm looking at your thoughts, or, you know.
I think, I think I can sum it up pretty quick. The state police are pulling out. We pay state taxes to the state police, they're pulling out, so now, we gotta pay more county taxes. So we replace the state police that we already paid for. So we're paying, why don't the state police cough up the money?
Transfer.
Cough up the money for the sheriffs.
So that's the conversation that came up?
If they can't cover us, then why do we have to pay our state taxes to them?
I, I understand that they haven't like increased the amount of state troopers for like years, like fifteen years.
They have less actually than they had years before. They have like fifty-something empty, empty positions.
Yeah.
You know, and they still do things.
And it's not coming out of our taxes if they haven't increased employees.
Washington County is one of the poorest counties there is, and they keep putting burden, more burdens on us, I mean, more and more and more. And state wins every time.
Well, and in Washington County, it's the same challenge.
This is counting, it's a heavy right now.
It's, it's statewide, you know, and.
Well, I mean, you drive down through Augusta, you're gonna see all the state troopers you wanna see.
You know, with, you know, just, you know, the challenge up here is, was identified to me in some of the discussions, is, you know, you have a few towns that have their own police department, but they're not twenty-four seven. Because, you know, they have like two guys, so like, there's still hours of the day that the sheriff needs to cover those towns in the event of emergencies. Like our sheriffs do a lot, and I just wanna plug.
Well, we're huge, Washington County is huge, they have eight, eight troopers, right?
Yeah, but we're paying twice.
Well, we're paying once, I mean.
You, like, we and everybody else in the state.
Right, right.
Not just us.
Not just us.
The whole, the whole.
Well, the state troopers pull out of here, not everywhere else.
State troopers do not totally pull out of here, they still do a lot of work.
Well, they keep the DOT guys here.
Yeah, just the DOT guys are here.
Uh, yeah, they're definitely.
They're still here.
So, um, my, I'm, I'm just looking to get a couple, I, I mean, I talk to people in town as I'm around, and, you know, I get questions about, well, what do we get from where sheriffs officers were, they, you know, were they being looked at?
That is a question.
Valid questions, and, and they're all points I brought up at the meetings.
And what did they say?
Um, well, I actually asked the sheriff, um, you know, with this funding, you know, tell me, uh, what, what initiatives, or, you know, uh, stuff will people get for these dollars? He had nothing to offer me in regards to an answer to that. He would just basically allow for continuation of what they do now, they go from call to call. You know, like the sheriffs get in their car, and they are just passing call to call to call.
The crime, the crime way.
Um, actually, the, the crime, uh, just, just in our area are down in regards to, um, uh, like violent crimes, and some other, of course, um.
That's because we don't have any police.
Exactly. And hoping she's gonna suffer up.
Cause we don't have any police.
And, 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 and very true, that's.
You, you, you add police, we're gonna have more crime.
It's like, it's worse, that is the way it works, but my question is, I'm looking for a reflection on where we stand in regards to how much of an increase in the county can we support.
Zero.
Uh, it's not realistic.
What kinda money are we talking?
Oh, it's millions in, in the crossroad, and then when you look at the new revaluations.
The bump.
From Lubec.
Oh, I don't have that paperwork.
It was like a hundred and nine thousand.
I was, it was about a hundred and ten grand.
Right, right.
What I read.
Wow.
For us.
That's, that isn't the same thing you were talking about?
What do we pay the state? Four hundred thousand?
More than that.
Right now?
We pay the state for.
Taxes.
Uh, John has a question.
Can you express that in terms of what, a hundred thousand dollar price home would see an increase in taxes?
Nope.
It's about a hundred dollars, they said, from what I read.
Yep.
Right around a hundred dollars per home, from what I read.
Well, if we have eleven hundred homes.
Yeah.
Right, that's.
Right.
Right, that's a hundred dollars.
And, and it all depends on what the final commitment is, because I'm not the only person on there that's struggling with.
What about the two, if you get rid of the two personnel people from the RCC, does that change it at all?
Well, it brings it down to maybe a fourteen percent increase, I mean, like, you know, there's no.
So it may be down to eighty thousand, or a hundred and fifty thousand instead of a hundred.
Right, right, you know, and I mean, like, you know, Lubec isn't the only town. Looking at this, Stubein and Bayleville and Lubec are now three of the highest valuations in, in the county, but Jonesboro, which, like, a lot of towns are hit with like much higher valuations this year, so like, everybody's sitting there kinda.
So there's a formula for this?
Yeah, that's the same sheet we got, the one that I forwarded you when I, but that's a new one, there's a new one since the.
Yeah, with the evaluation. I saw that.
Right, there's a new one since then that has put our valuation up even higher.
For next year.
For next year.
Which, which is not made in stone yet.
But, yeah, to remember that's. But, right, but you have to remember, that's January, you know, the county budget is January to December. So by the time we're doing budgets in March, we're committed for what we're gonna come up with in our budget. You know what I mean? We're, we're already committed at the vote that's gonna.
So we already have the line in there, if we agreed to the county.
Correct, if we, if we, cause this budget that the county's gonna approve, the county commissioners should approve it by the end of this fiscal year, which ends December thirty-first. So the new county budget starts January first.
And commissioners.
So how does Chris Gardner feel about this?
Well, he only, he's only showed up to the last one meeting, cause he had other issues going on in his life. Um, so he, um, had a lot of things to say, none of which weighed anything.
Relevant.
Right, well, you know, I wouldn't say they weren't relevant, but they really didn't do anything but vent against the situation. But the situation is what it is, and the county has to pass a budget, and Lubec's gonna pay its part, and I'm just looking to see.
How many people voted on that? How many votes, what's the voting membership of budget committees?
There are, um, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, maybe fifteen people on the committee. One representative, Marion Moore, the three commissioners are also on that committee.
Besides the fifteen?
No, they are part of it.
All together?
They are part of it.
Marion Moore.
Marion Moore is the, is the, um, state rep on, on the committee, she's attended three.
And the three commissioners, and then there's eleven others.
Three commissioners have not attended, well, Chris Gardner's attended none of the public, none of the budget meetings.
But he's a voting member.
Well, the, so he.
He's the chairman.
He's the chairman. Um, so my understa- I mean, technically, it's the county commissioners that approve the budget.
So you need eight, eight to seven would pass the budget, correct?
Correct, correct.
And I think I remember when Renee would tell us, there would only be a couple of dissenters.
Yeah, well, there was some, there were some people there who were ready to move, move, move the budget after it was just reviewed. I mean, I, I was the one at one of the meetings, and that asked if they could have all the department heads come back with like perhaps a five or ten percent decrease in what they were looking for, to bring it to a.
Excellent.
Um, well, the sheriff's department and the RCC could not decrease their ass.
But the RCC could, we're not at all.
But I'm just telling you what they said, they, they, they couldn't and they wouldn't. Um, probate did, um, everybody else did, you know, they came back with, um, their temps, which, in the big picture, don't spin the needle at all, because it's, it's that sheriff, RCC, personnels that are, are the biggest piece. So I just need to kinda get a feel, do you support bringing on the sheriffs that they want? Do you support, you know, giving the RCC the staffing that they want? I support.
I'd say too.
I support the public works, uh, uh, just they gotta have that, and he's the cheapest of all of them that they wanna put on anyhow. So I'm just looking for thoughts, cause tomorrow I have to like raise my hand for something.
They do realize this is, their timing is really wrong.
Yeah.
I mean, we just went through the reevaluation, and now we're gonna ask the taxpayers to pay another hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Yeah, no, it's probably not gonna change anything, it's, but it's up to.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a bad pill to swallow.
Yeah.
We'll give it up and order, they'll still come back to us and say, hey, you guys want coverage, it's a hundred and fifty grand a year.
Well, we looked into having one, this is my, it's like five hundred thousand dollars just for the car and the equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, I, I'm for what you said, if we need more sheriffs, I believe that, and I, and we need two RCC, and so, so do you wanna vote on what you.
No, I just want your opinion.
No, I just, I just, I just.
You know, I just was kinda, I didn't want y'all to be, not, I wasn't doing, no, I don't, no.
I really, I really do have any.
You know, but the reality is, it's probably gonna pass, the county budget is probably gonna pass.
Whatever you can do to get the couple of people off the RCC, that would be good.
At a scary increase.
But it was, we saw it coming.
Absolutely, you know, but, yeah.
Just the timing.
So let us know.
I, well, you'll know. You'll get the commitment.
I know you have other committees, anything else going on besides that, citing one?
Uh, no, economic development is changing its time, the five o'clock meeting. We had one business at the last meeting, and, you know, we've identified, um, we're trying to identify, like, how do we engage more businesses in the economic development? And just for an ad note, that it came up in conversation at the National Heritage Meeting today, in regards to like all the area town economic development, like trying to make some kind of collaboration on, on the whole piece, so.
But Jason, what about Marion's transfer, how's that going?
Marion's finally climbed out of the red.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
Yep, yep, they finally changed their ways, they had to, or they're gonna flush themselves down the toilet.
They had you on the board to tell them.
I'm kinda do, I'm doing the financials for them now, and.
That's why they invoice it, they're like, so just kidding.
I, I tried to get them to get you.
Yeah.
But they figured you were busy. But, yeah, we, we have an accountant on board, and she's doing wonderful, and we're all.
Oh, good.
We're turning, turning the corner up here, finally.
So when's your next meeting?
Tuesday the fourteenth. We just had to get the mentality of, you can go to the bank if you're out of money.
What about, uh, Richard, the planning, not, but you have a, you have a.
My, I'm with, I, yeah.
What about, what about that other one?
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan, we're meeting tomorrow, uh, Thursday, yes.
No, that's not on the, that's, that was not on the.
The comprehensive plans tomorrow?
I didn't see that on the schedule.
Well, they have the committee.
It is meeting tomorrow afternoon.
No, 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 I'm not down against.
I'll check more.
Oh, well, so that's gonna check. Penny is the one that puts it on the calendar.
No, I am.
People are, oh, you do it now? So, uh, oh, well, we're being a committee, so I'll just mention State Harbor, you had a question?
I did, and my question has to do with, we've all been following the turmoil in Washington, and wondering if that has an impact on the finances for the State Harbor project.
I believe that the money that was earmarked for the original grant, the nineteen and a half million, is put in a fund, and it's sitting there, minus the few thousand that we spent on the house we bought for. And the other twenty-one million that the college has gotten for, is already earmarked for, it's, it's already a done deal, it's been set aside, so.
The federal Department of Transportation just made big announcements yesterday on, I forget the billion dollar number, and they identified it as it's all going to ports.
Oh, there you go, that, the board, they pay much.
They, right, they just made that announcement, so like, you, you know, it's.
We can only hope.
Right, I'm assuming Lubec's in there.
The DRC doesn't think they have enough money yet, but we could all, all of the ways, very slowly, just like the federal government.
Yeah, like, you know, so they did announce.
The committee I'm most interested in.
Oh, yes, and.
How are you doing?
Last but not least.
Going good, we had our first meeting, and we're working on a mission statement, identifying, uh, some of the issues that we've talked about, and just trying to put an action plan in place. We've got some really, really strong members on that.
And what's the name of your, your committee?
The economic impact.
Um.
Stuff to me.
Economic impact?
For taxes.
Yep, we're looking at a lot of things that are affecting our taxes here.
Mostly the open, overland, maybe picking up the taxes.
It is land cross, well, conservation, we're also looking at all the other pieces that come into that, and how we can preserve what we have here. And that means workforce, affordable housing, we're gonna tie into all these other committees, and we've got a couple conduits and, and folks that sit on different committees, so. We're trying to pull it all together and come up with a, a good plan, an action plan, actionable plan, if you would, not just talk, um.
And we agreed that it, it was started in Augusta?
Yep, and, uh, there's, there's a number of.
Some of the effects on.
I think we're gonna work on some of our, our resolutions, we can act locally, I think, we can make an impact locally, but for the big stuff, it's still in Augusta.
Yeah, and Dan, I'm glad you said the affordable housing. I, I would love to have the town look into maybe selling a piece or two of their land, so we can build affordable housing here for folks. We have no workforce clap, I mean, people can't afford to live here anymore, the younger folks. And the town has many pieces of property that have just sat there for years, in years. And I myself would like to look into selling a few pieces to get affordable housing here for our families, for, so we can keep our.
Kind of like we did with the other property where we have a certain price, but they have to, I think what Jason said a little bit to me, uh, when we sold this other property, um, tax acquired. We, um, we had the developers come with ideas of what they would do with the property and what would be the best interest of the town. And that's why they got such a good price on the, on the land.
Right.
And they had to revise by that. And it was actually put in the deed when we gave it to them. It was sketch of how many, this year I'd have this done and then the next year I'd have this done. So if we approached it that same way, I think it's a really good idea that we would take, of course, we have to identify the properties that would be best suited for affordable housing. And I guess you would, you would be best figuring that out since.
I asked them to get a list together.
So we should look at that at the next meeting. Can you, will you put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Just, yeah. Just so you folks know, that property that we did that, where, was the old McDonald's. And, I mean, it went from a total disaster driving in town. Looked terrible to what it is right now.
And they put a roof on it, and they put siding on it, and, you know, they're slowly getting it off. It's a little, like, small takeout.
There's a laundry man.
That was absolutely gonna be a tear down.
To shirt company.
Until that happened.
Somebody bugged them so bad to get a laundromat in town.
And they did, that's so wonderful. Yeah, that's so good.
And the town needs it.
Really, really needed a laundromat.
But that's what I'm, I'm kind of looking towards.
This would be, this would be, this would be to purchase, in other words.
So in other words, they would. Purchase, but a purchase at a very reasonable price as opposed to.
And then the, the, would there be any kind of commitment that they would have to make with the town?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about.
Yes.
In terms of.
They would have to submit a proposal, a development proposal of what they were.
To make a, to even tie it to the name.
Okay, so it would be kind of like, I wanna make this business and I wanna have this building.
Yes.
We're not talking about units, you know, individual houses.
We're gonna house as many families.
Well, no, there might have as much as, well, I guess as well, as much as they wanna time it, put it into.
Do you want to determine a lot of it?
Or just at the beginning stages of how to, we could lay out.
And, I mean, that ties in the dance committee. And, uh.
Just one piece of it, yeah.
Yeah, just one small little chunk of it, really.
But we can certainly identify properties. Can you bring maybe a couple of tax maps of the properties that, um, that have large enough acreage
Yeah.
or a nice road accessibility so that it would work?
And, I mean, what Dan is working on right now in that committee is super important to every taxpayer in this town. I mean, it is. I can't tell you how important it is. And I know we're gonna make it happen, you know.
Right.
Well, because if we, if we, if we learn more about it, I mean, it would be great if we could have an expose, let's say, in quite a time, exposing what.
You'll read the paper, do you?
I do, I do.
Uh, J, JD's had a couple articles, uh, I think the main monitor borrowed your article as well and, and, uh.
Yes, he has.
And did quote some of the data that you had noted as well. There's an ongoing study with UMaine as well as the conservation groups that we have some of that data now.
Yes, we did.
But I, I've, it's.
But it's passing already.
Yeah, and to me, some of it is, um, not adequate, but, I don't wanna say misdirected, but not, we're, they're not sampling the right pounds on my, what we're getting with. I mean, there's, there's a lot of data that we're still collecting.
I'm just gonna listen to it.
Yeah.
Um, Zicky, do you have a public, public works, uh?
The only thing I got is please put it back out there next Wednesday night, six o'clock roadside van. We got two pieces right now that's been long on side of the road. So next Wednesday night, it's over.
I was gonna actually vote that, um.
Oh, you were talking.
I was gonna.
I was gonna send the owners letters, but I didn't know, someone said you may have already spoke to them.
I have. They, I spoke to everybody. They've, and, I mean, they know it. It's just a shame that they tested out.
Well, that's absolute.
Because they're not gonna like the results. I'm not messing around.
I know one's on Main Street. And I wonder where the other one is.
Yep.
I don't know where the other one is.
He's got.
Was there one for Vicky?
Where's the other one, Dick?
Brown.
The Brown.
Oh, the Brown, okay.
And we have, you know, a new position, uh, and I, we, we have an empty, we need to fill a full composition of public works. And we're looking actively, look, seeking someone that locally would, would like a job and has a C.
And has a CDL, right?
CDL license and comes with benefits. And if you know anyone at all, please send them over if you'd like to interview you.
What's the planning lady?
Oh, I am.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
Carol.
I'd just like, if I can, take a minute and commend the public works department, working with Donovan, contractor, and the, the water company. The other day I drove into town and there was like an eighty-foot geyser.
Yes, yeah.
I got my camera.
I sent Carol a picture.
I know.
Name's Old Faithful.
I went, I didn't have my camera, so I didn't get a picture of that. But I went back a little bit later.
I have. Nancy's got a new picture for you, right out of window.
There was a hole. And looking down, it was an eight-inch bite and it was strapping it all up. Water pressure in town was down.
Yeah.
By three o'clock in the afternoon, the hole was filled. You couldn't, you'd have a hard time seeing where they were working. They got that job done so quickly.
And that was amazing. The school had to close and everything, so they really, they really worked hard.
They just drove a gold star.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, isn't that deep, Dick?
Gold star.
It was a lot of hands. It wasn't just, it was not just.
I saw how many people down there. I stayed out.
Tagged that, yeah. You're a hundred percent right. And with Pleasant Street and Front Street, as we call it. You work on all the sewer rings and all that. That was great. That was, that was fantastic. Thank you, guys, for stepping up and doing that.
It's gonna, uh, pay dividends down the road.
Oh, yeah, you gotta raise the manhole covers before you leave.
We must've been losing quite a bit of water. So you wanted to say the next meeting, make sure.
Uh, our next economic impact meeting is Monday at five, here, if you're interested. I think it's on the calendar already.
I'll have this on my.
Okay.
Okay, well, we, uh, don't have any more public comment. We're going to go into executive.
Not public comment? Good evening, everyone.
Oh, committee update.
I'm pleased to announce that the Shellfish Committee had a very productive meeting last night.
Yeah.
And our next meeting is December fourth, six o'clock in this room. Uh, I invited Heidi Layton, who is the regional DMR rep. She's gonna look over and help us with some lineups coming up with our new Shellfish Management Plan. So.
Excellent. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, Michael. Oh, wait. I've known him ten years. It's hard to know which to Michael now. Um, so, hey, if there's no more public comment, we're gonna make the motion to go into executive session. MRSA, four oh five, six A Personnel Matters. And thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
I hope you don't confusion. This isn't executive session.
Yes, this is executive session.
Not for me.
This is an executive session. If you want to vote for a personnel matter.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Oh.
It has to do with personnel matters.
Yes, Mike needs to stay for one thing and I have a couple.
I can wait.
Yeah. Uh, I have something to tell you about that, too.
And.
Come up here. So we, so you can hear, we can hear.
It's a very good out of one.
Oh, wait a minute. Did I say anything?
No, I'm, don't worry.
Your camera's still on.
Yeah, I just remembered that.
That's why I said I can wait.
Okay.